Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
19th, 2020. I'd like to ask anybody that is not speaking to mute their microphones. Yes, and if you do need to speak, just call yourself to attention. You can unmute and attempt to speak. Adjustments to the agenda. We should have boards and committees added to the agenda.
People may still have their mics on and it's very staticky and a lot of background noise. So if your mic is on, please mute yourself so that we can hear. Thank you.
I think we got that. I would, we need to add boards and committees to that. I have a few items and I see that there's some people here that want to talk as well. Are there any other adjustments? Denise? Nothing. James?
No.
Nope. All right. So we will have that after public comment. Minutes from the prior meetings. I'll make a motion to accept those.
One second.
All those in favor? Aye. Public comment. If we can keep it to no more than three minutes, that would be good. Who wants to go first? Is there anybody that would like to have public comment?
David, Don Capinsoli.
Don?
Hi. Couple of things I wanted to thank Matt Perry and Eugene for helping me get materials into the brick meeting house for a construction project that started. We had, one of the highlights was the 20, 45 pound plates that we carried up, three plates of stairs and then some timbers and stuff. But a little bit more about that under boards and officials. The, the other thing I wanted to note, just sat at the passing of Eleanor Bemis. Dealt with her off and on over the last 40 years on a lot of things, not limited to the school board. I remember in particular, 1981, I was a young contractor bidding on the Athens Schoolhouse construction and had the bid openings on Atkinson Street and I showed up with my three month old Eli on my arm because Sandy was working. I just remember Eleanor sitting up front with the board and she got the biggest kick out of that. Part of the process of putting that bid together, I had a heating contractor at the time that said, boy, he says, you know, the architects wanted to go with electric baseboard heat with brick stories. And he says, that would have been a disaster for that school. He says, but you got a woman on your board, Eleanor Bemis, and she dug her heels in and insisted that we stick with an oil fired boiler. And, boy, you're lucky to have that woman on your board. You know, she's going to save the school a lot of money. And I thought it was ironic that the very last select board meeting, we, you guys finally got approved to have that boiler replaced after 39 years. I thought it was quite an irony. So, she'll be missed. I enjoyed my chats with her.
All right. Anybody else for public comments?
I have a couple of follow up questions from last month's meeting.
All right, we can, we can go with the questions and we do try and answer people's questions if we can, but public comment really isn't a question and answer. It's more if you have an issue that you want to bring to our attention. But you can, you can give us what you have, but it's, like I say, public comments is not necessarily a colloquy between the board and the town, so.
When would be the best time to ask those questions then?
Well, you can ask them now and we can look into it. And we can try and answer them if we've got the quick and easy answer for you.
Okay. Well, I'd like to say it's nice to see that those trees on Route 35 got cut, so those won't be an issue this winter. I do have one question. Did our dump truck, is that back at the garage now? And did that come in under the bid or over the bid?
I believe it is back and I'm not sure. I haven't seen the final, the final bill for that.
Okay. And the other question that was brought up at the last meeting was the Old County Road. Did anybody find out if that is a private road or if that is a class four road yet?
I believe that Tom is absolutely correct that it is not a, it is not a class four town road and we should not be on that. We should not be working on that, so.
Okay.
David?
Yeah?
I'm here with Don and I did look into that and you are absolutely correct. It's considered a private drive.
And the town should not and will not be working on that.
Right.
So, all right. Anybody else for public comments? All right, hearing none, going once, going twice. We'll move on to boards and committees. I have a few things. And I see Jack Breyer is here and he can, he can jump in on this if he wants. And he will have more information than I do on it. But Westminster is moving forward. They have a petition for a vote to withdraw from the Wyndham Northeast Elementary Union. I don't know if they have a date on that. It will probably be in either late December, but more likely January. It will be an Australian ballot. After that vote, if it is voted to withdraw from the district, Athens and Grafton both will have to hold a special town meeting as to whether to allow Westminster to withdraw from, from that board. My understanding is that the school board is not, is not the driving force behind this and can't be the driving force behind this because they have to remain impartial and follow the, the idea of attempting to do as the State Board of Education wanted. But it, if, if Westminster votes to withdraw from the union, then Athens and Grafton would have to vote to allow it. And that would leave a union of Athens and Grafton if the state board approves it. Jack, is there anything you want to add? You certainly probably have a lot more to it than that.
Well, that really covered it really well. What, if, if, with your indulgence, because I like slides, I created one and just to kind of walk through the outlines, because there are things that Athens is going to have to do, with your permission?
Sure.
Do the click on the, on the present now button here? All right, let me see if it will let me do that. And it seems to allow me to do that. You're going to see yourself second time here. Here's, here's a slide that I just wanted to walk you through. Yes, as you said, Westminster's filed, it's been accepted. We're anticipating at this point, a vote of the Westminster community, late December, early January. Now, there are things that each of the towns left in this process have to do. And the one that I urge you to get working on is convene your advisory commission. Grafton is in the, has authorized them to meet and you'll need to do the same. Why? Because, just because Westminster wants to withdraw doesn't necessarily mean that Athens or Grafton want them to withdraw. We think they do, but we, you know, we don't know. The key items are the financials. What's it going to do to your taxes, for example? What's, was it due to the stability of the school system? The state board is going to want to know this. Now, we at the school and Supervise Reunion have a lot of that data. I've already asked our finance director at the SU to start collecting it, but it's going to still be your report. To make your lives easier, I think it would be best if whoever chairs your advisory commission, and maybe you, David, would want to contact Joe Polio and Bill Kearns. I sent you their data the other day. And Sue Harlow and David Major might become your best friends too. Sue is the West Select Board Chair. David is the driving force. He's the Westminster Advisory Commission Chair. Anyway, you're going to want to make a recommendation to the towns because there'll be a joint vote. It'll be sponsored by the two towns and the school board and we'll figure out how to coordinate all this. It'll be 30 days out from the, or approximately from the vote of the Westminster community. That's by law. By law, the two votes have to take place on the same date. If we have the ability to have town meetings, we can do that, but I think it's probably going to be, probably going to be Australian ballot votes. After that, go to the State Board of Ed. The two leftover advisory committees are going to want to prep statements about its impact on the school. Why it's acceptable, the board, the school board can help you with this. But again, we have to be one step away from looking like we are advocates because we'll get slapped for that. And if it's successful, Athens and Grafton will be left as unified district. And then we'll figure out what we do from that point forward. We're asking Westminster to do this first, mostly because they're the most eager, they're willing to pay, and they have a grievance that they have no roads in common with Athens and Grafton, that I think is more acceptable to the State Board of Ed. If all this goes forward, then the advisory commissions of Grafton and Athens may want to help with things like changes to governance because we'll be a four person board and that gets a little dicey. So, that's sort of the, that's the long and short of it. I'll click off and, and ask for any questions you may have because I bet you got some, because I would want some. Hold on just a second while I do, do that unpresenting thing.
All right.
Jack, it's Denise Randall. I do have a question. Is this, is the Governance Board going to plan on having a sort of like three town meeting for question and answers?
I think probably we would suggest that the advisory commissions chair those. I'm certain, you know, Lynn and I will certainly be present as part of that. I'm pretty sure Jessa will too, but, so we can, we can help because we don't want to kind of leave you all abandoned to do this. But it's, at every step, it really has to be shown as a town initiative, just because the state's going to accuse us of orchestrating our own demise if we don't. So that's kind of how that deal works.
Jimmy, you have anything? Does anybody else have any questions for Jack or any comments on this?
Lynn, did I miss anything? Lynn, you find that button is a little tricky on this particular presentation.
Yeah, I finally found it. No, I think you covered it thoroughly.
Well, and Lynn is your point of contact, obviously. She's your rep. I came in because I have, I like to talk more and also because, you know, I've been living this for a while. I see Denise has got a question.
I do. Is, is it feasible for the both towns to have a meeting at the school to discuss all this, all the questions and answers? Or do we have to meet separately as two towns?
Well, in, in the best of all circumstances, we would meet in a town meeting. I'm, I'm, I'm a little dubious of how many town meetings we're going to be having for the next couple of months, given the COVID situation. So, the state has allowed us to do, do Australian ballot. I'm assuming that's what we're going to be stuck doing. I obviously would prefer to have a conversation with people because people have questions that can't be answered any other way. I think that pre-town meeting is a really, really good idea and I didn't have it on my list and I'm putting it on my list.
But if we can't have it in person, which I also don't think is going to be likely, we, we can certainly have it virtually to try and get some questions answered or people, people's issues. But it would be, it'll be 30 days from now, at least before Westminster votes and it's then going to be 30 days. So we're a couple of months out, so, you know, we can't really read the future, but I suspect it won't be an in-person.
Yeah, and this is going to land on Kim Record and, and your town works next a little bit because it seems like every time we turn around, we're asking them to have another, another Australian ballot vote. And Darlene will try to do whatever we can to make that as painless as possible. So, including having the right, having the right, I'll help you out with that if we can.
And, and just to confirm, Jack, if Westminster does not pass, if it gets declined, then there's something else we can do?
Will? Now, that's interesting. If it gets declined, then theoretically Athens or Grafton, or maybe Athens and Grafton could petition to withdraw. I just think politically it's a little tougher road because they yelled at us at the State Board of Education when, for slow walking, a merger that, that Grafton should undertake initially. And we think that to some extent, Westminster was a collective casualty of that. And it'd be a little easier if, if they said yes. My, my impression is that the people in favor of this are wildly in favor of it. And if you've not, if you don't know David Major, he is a force of nature and is not to be denied. And so to some extent, I think that it'll go through simply because he's going to will it to go through.
All right. So I think what we, we should do is get the advisory committee together to start working on this. I think we may also need to authorize that they speak with an attorney, which may cost us some money, but to make sure that everything is done correctly and, and follow with that and proceed from there. We will certainly have something at our next meeting and that will be before the Westminster vote, but I think if we need some legal, legal advice, we're going to need it. Certainly, the school is not going to be able to provide that for us and it's going to be, it's going to be between us, Grafton and Westminster to authorize and provide that, so.
David?
Yeah?
Yeah. With your permission, I would say that I'm really strongly in favor of letting Westminster and to lesser extent, Grafton pay for as much of this as possible, just because they're the larger towns and got the larger budgets. But I agree with you. The main thing that we'll need from you guys is to get that advisory commission convened as soon as possible. I don't know if it's possible within your, within your agenda to authorize them to meet the next, because we need to get them in place and running because the clock will run pretty fast if we don't and it's the holidays.
Yeah, I understand that and, and that's what I'm, I'm saying. I think we want the motion for that and I'm not looking to spend a ton of money on attorneys, but that if we need something or the committee, the advisory committee needs something, that we don't have to hold another special meeting or, or something like that, so.
I'm good. Okay, I'm done.
Now, if that wasn't on the agenda, David, can we still make the motion to do that? Maybe we can do that under, other business or something?
No, we can vote it now. If we need to, we can ratify it at another meeting, the December meeting. We can ratify the vote now at the December meeting. If we vote for it now, we can, we can then ratify it at the, at the December meeting. So do we want to do that, Jim?
Yeah.
Denise, what do you have to say about it? You?
Yes, I, I would like to get the commission going in this way that would give them plenty of time to prepare and seek legal counsel when need be.
Yeah, I'm not saying that they're even going to need to seek it, but just so that they, they have the opportunity to if they need to and, and go from there. Jack, one other question. Will the Supervisory Union be able to provide us all, all the towns with the financials as to what it will cost us and projecting out if we stay together or if we dissolve?
Will, I have told Flora Pagan for a month now that as part of our budget prep, that's what I'm expecting. She's going, she is, she understands that we're asking, the school board is asking her to prepare effectively two budgets. One for us as a three town unified district and one for us as two districts and with the tax data associated with it. That I'm expecting, and I also have talked to the AOE and told them that we may be asking Dr. They already read the Rattleberry reformer, so they know that this is coming.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, but before I do, I just have another quick question for Jack. Being that there will be two, possibly two budgets from the ESU? When March comes along, how do we know which budget will be on our?
What we will do? Good question and the answer is not as tight as I'd like it to be. It a lot depends on where things are at. I'm anticipating that as, I really want to get this moving sooner than it is because I wanted us to be able to just vote on, on our, on our, on our joint budget rather than a three-way budget. But as it's looking, what we'll do is we will present to the voters, will probably still be a three town unified district when March comes. So we will present a budget of the three towns together and we'll show you as part of my report, the budget broken out. And we'll, it'll, it'll be a little thicker document than usual. That's what I've asked for to do. It's one of the reasons why I'm a little concerned about timelines because normally we'd have the budget pretty well nailed down and we haven't even started the process because of all the other silliness that's gone on at the, at the Finance Office over at Cherry Hill this year. So we will try to have everything in a timely manner. This is as best as I've got today. Don't, you know, don't hold me to it tomorrow, but that's my, that's what we've asked for.
Okay. So Denise, Denise, you're making the motion to have the advisory committee working with the other two towns advisory committees and preparing for a possible vote from?
Yes, but Jack, is it an advisory committee or is it a commission?
Will, I can't remember what you guys called it. That's why I've been putting C O M M on all the documents because I couldn't remember what you, what you ended up with. I think it's, did you commission, was that it? I can't remember.
We, we followed whatever, I, I don't remember exactly myself enough, looked at the town report, but we followed whatever the lawyer said at the last, the last thing. So it may be a commission, but I'm not sure. Committee or commission?
I believe it was an advisory commission, not, not a committee.
That's my, I think both Grafton and Athens went with commission and Westminster went with committee, but I get confused.
Okay.
That sounds about right to me. So I will make the motion for the advisory commission to get the ball rolling to withdraw from the Wyndham Northeast Elementary Union School District, waiting for the Westminster vote and seek legal counsel where need be.
All right, I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Would you be able to answer my, can I go get my dinner?
I think you can have dinner, Jack. I think.
All right. Thanks and I'll pull on everyone.
All right.
Take care now. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Jack. Goodbye.
All right. One other thing for boards, well, two other things for boards and commissions, committees. I was approached with, from the Director of the Special Education at Wyndham Northeast about the possibility of. For a special.
David? We have to start that again. We, I don't think anyone heard you on that. You cut out for a while.
I received a call from the Director of the Special Education at Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union to see if we had any interest in renting the former elementary school. They are looking at. Starting a school for special ed and Athens might be the location that they would choose if, if we were willing to rent that to them. They, they're, like he said, they're in the very early stages of it, but wanted to get our temperature as to, as to what we thought, if we would be able to or if we would rent it. I expressed to him that I'd bring it up tonight at the select board meeting, but I said, I, I suspect that we would want to with the caveats that we were building for town meetings, which one, two days a year to, to use it. But other than that, I said, I, I thought we would at least be open to it and I would bring it before everybody to ask about that. You know, no, no figures on how much it would be or what it would be or anything like that. As they said, it wouldn't start until next year anyways, next September probably. Do you have any?
And?
If we want to continue talking?
I would make that recommendation that we do. And then we also need to think about, do we, we continue with all the building maintenance and all the fees and the insurance? Or do we just add that into the cost, you know, add that into the cost of the rent or do we put that all on them? That's something that we'll need to discuss. But I am all for renting that building to get some income coming in because we're spending a lot on the building now.
Yeah, that, well, that's, I kind of explained that to him. It's, it's kind of a burden to us right now and probably we would, we wouldn't ask for necessarily a lot of rent for it, but that we would want our expense paid for it, that we, that we're putting out into it. But I said that would be between all of us and I said that was just my thinking. Jim, what do you think?
Is there any changes we'd need to make to the building because it's special education?
The first, first glance at it, they're not saying that they want that building, but they want to be able to have it as a option.
Have they looked in, have they looked in the building themselves?
As an option.
Uh, yes, I did.
Yeah. So, so they see a building, they know what it is. And I'm not thinking that we would have to, we would have to do much of anything, explain much for ourselves, but that's something that will come later. This is just more just saying, yes, we're interested and we can work to, work to all the details out as, as we go. If they, if they are interested and we're interested, then we can. We can move forward with it, so.
I would say go ahead and move forward with it. Any amount of income that comes in that would offset our expenses, that would be great.
Yep, I think we should go forward with it as well.
Yep. Jim? All right. So why don't we, I'll make a motion that we, that we pursue that and we would, they were open to the option of renting it out to the Supervisory Union for special education.
I'll second that motion.
So a second?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor? We also, our local emergency management mitigation plan, and I'm not sure I have that. Exactly the terminology on that, but it's the mitigate, the emergency mitigation plan that we have in FEMA every five years is coming up for renewal. There is a grant that we can apply for to fund that. And we would probably then. Work with Wyndham Regional to do that, to draft up the, the plan. Draft up the the plan. Um I'm not sure how shit will cost us, I don't think it'll cost much. Uh we would have to uh agree to a uh twenty five percent match on the grant. Um if if we received it and and got money, we would also be able to put in kind. Doors in uh for for planning and working on it. Um. So I don't know exactly what the total cost of, but we we need a um. We need a go ahead to apply for the grant um to do that. Do you have any?
David, with that, I know we have a, we had a plan in place, you know, a couple, four, five years ago. Can we work off of that plan and revamp that? Is it, okay. So it just takes some minor adjustments and tweaks to that.
Yeah.
I I'd be willing to make the motion um to pursue the grant that we would have to pay twenty five percent of to go. In in order to um move forward with that.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay, um anybody from the emergency committee want to talk on that? Don or Lynn? Not sure who else is here, can't see everybody.
Um I don't know mu- much about that, that was uh Tim. Sent an order around on that.
Yeah.
So you covered everything I know about it.
Okay, I will uh I will get, we will vote on it, but then I will get with uh Tim and Alissa Sabato.
When, Dave, I I do have a question. When does that have to be in place? Can we get some input from the emergency committee before we move forward with it, or is that something that's mandated that we need to have?
We need to have it regardless.
Okay. Yeah, was FEMA uh getting aid from FEMA, if I understood correctly?
Well, it.
Okay.
It would cut, if we didn't have it in place, it would cut down uh our grants for uh repairing work and stuff if uh. For instead of the ninety percent, it would be seventy percent or sixty percent. So if we didn't have it in place, it would only cost us money, so. We need that, we need that emergency plan in place, and I think it ends in June. Don't quote me on that date, but I think that's when it expires so far.
David. Could you tell me when did that motion?
Yeah. Darlene?
I'll second it.
Uh I think Jim did, right, Jim? Jim seconded it.
Aye.
All right. Uh that's all I had for boards and committees. Uh who else do we have? Don, do you have anything?
Uh yes, cemetery commission will be meeting briefly on Wednesday, December second, six o'clock, uh probably have to do this Zoom thing, but never hosted one of those before. Uh probably be a brief presentation on our budget and uh. Love the uh the budget request that we've already submitted to the budget committee. So that's it. Um meeting house, I'm wondering if Janet or somebody else wants to lead out on that and I can update on the construction. I I see Janet's window.
Hi, Don.
All right.
Hi, Don, you you probably have more to do uh to say about the meeting house than I do. So why don't you go ahead?
Um yesterday, the crew showed up and started uh bolting up all the all the plates and all the hardware. Where um they're uh, oh gosh, forty two years in the trade and I didn't realize how. Hard softwood gets. Uh the guys, they 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 uh, as of yesterday, they had two hundred dollars worth of drill bits and they burned them. All, we had to clean out Home Depot tonight on the way. The um. We're getting power from next door and with those ten gauge extension cords, that two hundred fifty feet of cords gets us up in the attic and I'm I'm astonished at how little line loss we're getting. We're running uh. Uh two floodlights up there, uh vacuum, uh saws all impact driver all at once. They're running two impact drivers today, so so that part's working out well. Uh money wise, the board uh. Figure uh. On the uh materials for the strut work, we had approval of up to uh twenty two hundred thirty five dollars uh. Uh which which was the price we had from W W, but we uh. We we found different sourcing, we were able to get that number down to uh one thousand four hundred thirty five. Uh and and actually with uh some uh credits and exchanges today, I'm I'm I have a uh. Thirty two cent check for the town of Athens, I got a, you know, as as a return from that, so so we're well ahead on that. Um. But I have uh. Um I have used W W for incidental materials and I'm I'm up to about two hundred fifteen dollars uh in in that uh. And uh the other, I I I miscounted on my bolts with Renault Brothers, so I have another uh sixty eight dollars with Renault Brothers. Above the given figures that was approved. Um. There, there is one detail, um. There are um uh amongst the uh extra timbers that the project involved, I. There there are two uh. Ten foot Douglas Ford beams that didn't sound too like too much to me on paper, but oh my word, when they uh when they showed up on site, I realized that. They're they're too heavy and bulky to get up the the set of stairs, so I have uh. I I have two options for uh getting those beams upstairs. Well, one is to get into a sawmill and cut them into four by tens, if the engineer will allow uh that and I. Uh waiting to hear back from her. The the other thing is to set up a block and tackle out of the uh. Oh, steeple uh window, um. Uh the um. The 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 four by ten option could possibly happen in December, the uh the the block and tackle option would be uh next May sometime. But um I'm I'm having the contractors uh bolt up the brackets that I need for that piece of the project so that. When when, you know, when I do get the beams up there, that I could finish that myself with a, you know, maybe one helper or two. Um but that basically they 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 should get through the uh the contract, so. Um. Um so we're probably by by middle of next week, the construction will be complete up there. We have, we have a gor- gorgeous sign that uh. Uh the road crew uh installed on the on the on any edge of the road and I know the committee's uh. Looking at next steps, uh but one of the committee members would have to speak to that, you know, the the long term grants that they're going after. So that's that.
Um, all right, anybody else for boards and committees?
David, I have a couple of things.
All right.
Um they did a fire inspection at the fire alarm inspection at the school. And during the inspection, they noticed that the fire extinguishers need servicing.
Okay.
Also, the boiler room door is practically off its hinges, I guess, and that needs to be fixed because that door needs to be closed.
Okay.
And the the last thing I had is we had doing um. Delinquent taxes today, I was looking at the uh credits that people had. And one showed up for Veronica Brailsford, who is no longer an owner. And it was for sixty five dollars and forty seven cents, so I was just wondering what I should do with that.
Maybe that came from the state, didn't it?
It came on from the program, yes.
So maybe we just contact the state and send that back.
It's not from the state, it's a credit that we owe Veronica Brailsford.
It, then we should look for her and um. Do we have an address and things for her?
I probably can get it off the in old textbook.
Then I think she, we should send that back to her if if we owe it to her.
Okay, that's I just want to clarify that.
Jim, what do you think? Denise on that?
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, how how long ago was she an owner?
Um I think it just sold within the last two years.
Yep.
We should just make every attempt we can to get that to her.
Okay.
All right, um and as for the the uh. Um fire extinguishers, Matt, can you work on getting those recharged?
Yep.
All right, that and look, look at the door to see what that needs if if you can. Re hinge that or get that in place?
Yeah, I can spend a little time with that door, David, I don't think it'd be that bad.
Okay, all right, so Matt and Don will will work on the door and um. And Matt will figure out where we can get the uh fire extinguishers redone, so.
I know there's a place in Keene that, there used to be code three in Rattleboro, I don't know if they're still there, but there is a place.
I believe code three still is in business, but I I can't swear to that.
Yeah, they are.
Okay. Um, okay, anything else for boards and committees?
Uh yes, David, this is Janet.
Janet, go ahead.
Hannah and I have some receipts for that grant. That we, we haven't submitted to the town yet, we're gonna do that Monday.
All right.
And uh. To to submit it to the town, they gotta show that they've been paid by the town.
Mm hmm.
So would it be all right if Darlene cuts us the check for those receipts?
Yeah, how much are they?
Um mine is for the computer and the printer.
Okay.
And uh Hannah's is for the web.
All right.
So mine's about seven fifty for both.
All right, so I will make a motion that uh Darlene, that we add that to the warrant and uh that uh Darlene. Uh issue the uh. The reimbursement.
Okay.
They're second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, anything else?
Um, we're on for Tuesday night for virtual?
Yes.
For the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and I believe Hannah, you're gonna be sending them out a copy of our budget?
Yes, I will send out a a copy of the draft twenty twenty one budget before that meeting.
Okay, good. All right.
And then, and the last thing, um on my own, I contacted Appalachia Salt out in New York. Cause several towns around here use it and it's uh, I guess it's a better salt for the roads. And I got a quote of seventy dollars and thirty cents for a ton delivered. And there's no signed contract. So I just thought I'd put that out there in case.
Jack, you cut out there for a minute, can you say that again, eighty dollars and?
Thirty cents a ton delivered. But they don't require a signed contract. And it's. From what I understand, it's a dry salt, so it hasn't been rained on or anything like that. It's supposed to be a little bit better and uh. I just thought I'd put that out in case the town might want to try it to see if we, even though it's five cents more than what we. Sign the contract for with cargo, it might cost less in the long run. If we just wanted to try some, if Matt thought that would be feasible.
So they will sell us a load or two loads of it to try?
Um, I'm assuming they will because there's no signed contract. Like he asked me what our average is for the year and I pulled him three hundred and fifty tons. And uh with no signed contract, I, from, I can send you the emails that I got from him. If you wanted to look at them.
If you can send it to all of us, yeah, that might be good.
Yep, so uh, yeah, I just thought it might be something that the town might want to try to stretch the salt. If it, you know, works better, it might work under a lower temperature, I'm not sure, but. I just know that several of the towns around use that salt company. So.
Okay, yeah, send us the emails and we can look at that and figure that out.
Okay.
All right, anybody else for boards and committees? If not, we'll go on to warrants and mail, and we don't have the mail here. Um and I don't have a copy of the warrant, although I have a copy of the financials and stuff. I will make a motion that we sign that Darlene leave the warrant at the town office and that we uh. Individually, we go there and sign the warrant.
I'll second that.
All right. Is it, will that be?
Yes, it's already on the table, David, it's already.
Okay, all right. That good with you, Jim?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh Rhodes, Matt?
All right, we uh got the chipper all back together. Got it running, checked the oil the next morning and the block was fully antifreeze again. So the head gasket, the head and the head gasket was not the problem. So we're in a process of finding a short block for it, but they're very rare and hard to find. So we're gonna put it together and just set it outside for the winter until we find one.
Okay.
Um, let's see, got the big truck back, still uh negotiating the bill with ATG. And. Got a bunch of work done.
Why are you negotiating the bill? What is the cost of it?
They sent me a bill for seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty something dollars.
We made a motion not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
That is right. That is exactly what I told them the day I went down there, do not exceed fifteen thousand dollars. I, they called me and said, the truck is ready. I said, well, how much is the bill? She told me, I said, uh, that's not what we told you. And she said, you either pay the bill or leave the truck. That was the answer I got from ATG. And I went up and saw Craig Allen and he said, give me a week or two to work with this. Nate, the shop manager was not in, he was gone on vacation.
Well, we're not gonna pay the seventeen thousand.
No, we're not.
Um so if they want to uh litigate, we can deal with that at that point, um but we're not paying over fifty. All right, but you have the truck and.
Yep.
It's running fine?
Yep.
And you're ready for?
Yeah, we're ready for the onslaught to begin. The uh, yeah, next week Eugene's gonna start grading up some of the main roads we got, got a little rough with all the rain. When it warms up a little bit. And other than that, we're ready for winter. And I did, I did look into leaf blowers and the best one for a backpack leaf blower, they claim is the Echo. And it's, uh I believe, I don't have the price right in front of me, but it was like six hundred and five dollars. Before the municipal discount.
How much is it gonna begin on?
Uh it should put it down around the five fifty mark.
Um. Well, you need it to keep the leaves and stuff out of the, out of the uh. Stones and stuff to keep us in compliance, right?
Yep.
Where we buy it?
I was gonna go over to Arms and Saw Shop where we got the last Echo weed whacker and all that.
Okay.
Yep.
And it can repair it if something happens. I'd say we go ahead and do that. Denise, what do you think?
I, I'm trying to unmute myself, my button wasn't working. Um if it's something that we need, we we need to have it. Did you shop, was that the best price you could get it? You you didn't find it anywhere else better?
Not, not dollar for dollar.
Okay. And you you need it for this year?
You should clean the leaves out of the, at least the cemetery. You should clean the leaves out of the, at least the cemetery, off the cemetery road, the ones we just put eleven thousand dollars in.
I mean, my concern is all the rain we've had, everything is all wet. Well, would the blower, is it a powerful enough blower to blow wet compacted leaves or?
From everybody I've talked to, it's supposed to. I've checked with a lot of the local contractors and they love them. They say wet leaves, dirt, rocks, small sticks, moves everything.
What are you?
Yeah, well, we need one.
All right, so let you. If that's the best price. Get where you can get it with the best price, I guess.
All righty.
Um, do you guys want to use the the small equipment reserve in the equipment fund for that purchase? Or take it out of Lake Miscellaneous Highway?
Think we'd take it out of Miscellaneous Highway.
Why wouldn't we take it out of the small equipment? I mean, that's what that's there for. It's a reserve fund for small equipment.
Well, it's there also for the um. Yes, for this equipment, uh, but it's for like the rock rake, it's for the, you know, the chipper, it's for. Not sure it's for just for like a saw or a leaf blower or something, but. Cause you don't have a ton in there. If we buy a chainsaw of it and we buy a leaf blower out of it. Then that will just complete that, and we need to get new teeth for the, say, the rock rake or something like that, because you don't put a lot.
The raked teeth aren't, the raked teeth aren't in that fund. That's just for purchasing equipment.
I I carry the weight, but.
I know, I know over the years, the budget committee has really worked hard to keep miscellaneous funds low when possible. Uh, because they were getting way out of hand, and if there's a fund for a specific item such as a s- small equipment fund, and we need to buy a leaf blower, I think it should come out of that fund.
I agree with that. It should come out of the small equipment.
All right, that's what we did. Uh, anything else?
Not at this point.
So do you want a motion and a vote for that?
I don't think we need one, but you can make one. Denise makes motion, and I second it to purchase a Echo floor. Um, or uh. Out of the small equipment fund.
Hey, Matt, is there any funds available for maintaining these ditches that they made us put in? Are there any grants for that?
I'm looking, I'm starting to look into those. Within the last couple days, me and Dennis have been working on the, a bunch of grants and aids and all kinds of things. Just starting to dig into that stuff.
I mean, because you think about that, if they were mandated to be put in, that they would have some money available to for the maintenance of them.
But maybe when we we could try and put this in as in kind. For for working on it, we can put in some in kind figure for uh. For the grants that we get, so we may be able to put this in for that. Don't know. We can check when it comes around. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, folks, uh, executive session, we don't have anything for that.
No, sorry, I was shaking my head. No, I don't have anything.
All right, Jim?
I don't have anything.
All right, any further business? I don't have any. Um, I will make a motion to.
David. Yes. Yes, I have, I have uh.
You want to comment?
Now, at this point, I guess. Um, yep, on the findings and the conclusions that you guys sent us. Is that the final or some of the stuff that was discussed in the meetings about?
Yes.
Possibility of uh two rod in places and if the coverts work, is that still stuff that can be talked about, or is the what you sent us final?
I think what we sent is final, is my understanding.
My other question is on that is this, at the last meeting, a person asked about if there's any more information. On Taylor Hill, and they said not at this time. Yet the papers show that it was signed on that date of the last meeting that that was questioned. Um, we were there from the time the meeting started until the time it was adjourned, so I'm wondering when was this actually signed? Everybody there said there's nothing was talked about it or anything. We were all there.
David, I think that, I think that was done after executive session.
We all came back in after executive session.
Okay, the the decision and the the uh, the uh. Finding was not part of the the actual slickboard meeting, and that is not a public uh, a public thing that's not signed. In in a public, that part of the hearing and the deliberation of the hearing is my understanding.
Yeah, sure, okay, whatever.
Denise?
No, we, I know it was signed that evening a- after executive session. That's all I know at this point. Um, it was part of. During the open meeting, we didn't have all that information until after executive session.
Jim?
Nope, I don't have anything to add.
Yeah, I believe it was all part of the deliberation of the hearing and not part of the. Actual meeting there, so.
So when was, when, so when did that deliberation take place then?
It it took place from the time of the hearing until we see, until we signed the uh decision. We had sixty days.
I realize that, I was thinking it was signed on the fifteenth, the day of the meeting, and everybody was there. There was no talk about it or anything even brought up about it if it was done there at that meeting. Which, even if it wasn't done at the meeting, we were there before some of the selectmen showed up, and we were there until everybody left.
Said, it wasn't part of the 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 meeting, it was part of the deliberations, which on me. My understanding. Uh, anybody else have these time? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the meeting's adjourned.